Okay, I call this regular meeting of the Luray Town Council now in session. Will you please stand and join me for another sound. I'll ask Councilman Pettit to lead this.
United States of America, two great republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And here will you please call the roll.
Yes, Mayor Hoffman.
Here.
Mr. Vickers.
Here.
Ms. Lillard.
Here.
Mr. Sharrow.
Here.
Mr. Pettit.
Here.
Mr. Sowers.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Okay, do we have any additions to or deletions from the agenda? All right, hearing now will move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Vickers?
I move to approve the file consent agenda. The minutes of the regular council meeting of May the 10th, 2022, minutes of the work session May 24th, 2022, financial reports ending May the 31st, 2022, and accounts payable totaling four hundred and twelve thousand, thirty-five dollars and fourteen cents.
All right, discussion. Daniel?
Mr. Sharrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
All right, general citizen comments. The first person to sign up is Mr. Earl Brunson. Are you going to give us your address, Mr. Brunson?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for coming here.
Well, I'm here tonight and I've given out copies to all of you because I'm concerned that this business of school shooting like had happened in Underland, Texas. Be advised, the town of Luray is not immune to such a thing happening here. We need to be very aware of that. All it takes is one man, or one young man, to do to Luray what happened in Texas. I would just like to read some assumptions I have that perhaps if need be to forward to the school board or the county board, or the appropriate members that they need to see this also, if you could forward that. I want to say the concerts at Cooters from 1:00 to 3:00 on Saturday and 2:00 to 4:00 on Sunday, could you share perhaps protection perhaps with a fun drive in the process at the place because a lot of people rather there. Anyone could walk in on that and cut loose. Furthermore, notices should go out to all churches. They should lock the outside door during the service because any shooter is very aware that the common time is between 11:00 in the morning and 12:00 noon on Sunday for a service. The following goes out to all schools. All schools' doors must be locked on outside during classes. Principal's responsibility to check them. Fine for first three occurrences during the, during one year would be five hundred dollars each to the principal, and on the fourth during the calendar year, if it happens a fourth time, immediate dismissal for the principal. All students to go in and out of main entrance only at beginning and end of day with armed guard present. All visitors and deliveries to main door only with active intercom, door buzzer, and armed guard. Armed, properly trained guard or officer with Kevlar vest always to be at front main entrance. Anyone approaching schools with a gun is to be shot and killed immediately. All personnel leaving schools use main entrance only, armed guard present. Anti-Goods American law should be in effect. In other words, it should be well known that we dial 911 if there's an accident, to be used if a wreck happens outside or seen outside of school, that no one should go run out to that accident because we can see what can happen. So 911 should be called. Any school teacher or employee blocking door open, no guard present to be dismissed, first offense. Student guilty of blocking door open, immediate expulsion with fine to be made up in summer school. All doors other than front door or main door do have a loud alarm sound with push release on it so that you can immediately hear that the door has been opened. And this notice should be sent out to all staff and actually the parents of the students in duplicate copy to be signed by everyone. And that's my recommendations because we need to probably look at this and consider all these things because it's a very serious situation that we shouldn't be complacent about. And that's why I came here tonight, just to voice my feelings and to give you my paper so that if you could forward it to the proper authorities other than yourselves, I'd appreciate it.
Mr. Brunson, of course, I think we all share your concern, it could happen here.
Oh, sure.
But most of the things you have suggested really, the school board handles security of the schools and we don't pretty much tell the school board what to do. I would suggest you go to the school board or the board of supervisors with the suggestions. Let them know.
Well, how about the churches?
Well, she, did you talk to the churches about a year ago? Well, I think unfortunately we had another one of these incidents.
About two years ago and less. Yeah, we had them, and we called the pastors, those pastors that can.
Fortunately, they were relaxed.
Can you forward this?
We can't tell the churches, we could maybe suggest maybe do the same thing again, that might be helpful. As far as the schools, we just had no control over security of the schools.
Would there be any way you could just forward this to, over to the people, or should I have to go?
I think, yeah, we don't.
I'll take it.
Yeah.
I'll take it.
Okay, there you go.
I'll take it too.
Okay, can I have a copy for him? I'd like to keep my. Can you get a copy? Because this is all I got left.
Oh, yes, sir.
And I want to keep it. Okay, that's all I had to say.
My suggestion would be for you to appear before either the school board or the board of supervisors with your thoughts.
Okay, I'll look into that.
Counsel, anybody else?
No.
No, thank you for coming.
Thank you. Appreciate you listening to me.
Okay, Wayne Miller. Good evening. Have fun, Baker Development.
Yes. Good evening. My name's Dwayne Miller, General Excavation, and on behalf of Baker Development. Wanted to request a closed session meeting to discuss some communication deficiencies that we feel that we're having with town staff with regards to development out of the Ray Landing. Don't feel that it's appropriate to do this in a public setting, which is why I'm asking for the closed session. And asking now because this is the only way we knew to get in front of everyone.
Well, I think we talked about this, I mean, if you want to have a meeting with the mayor, Rodney, we can't go in a, I don't think we're allowed to go in a closed session. You're welcome to talk right now. I mean, you know, if you've got something wrong.
What?
I mean, I don't want to put you on the spot.
No, I don't. I don't. I don't think it's appropriate to be kind of honest.
You've done with something wrong with the staff. I mean, you're already kind of challenged.
Oh, but you have one.
I don't think we can go in closed session because you'd like to have a conversation with us and our staff. Talk to the mayor, the mayor will talk to us individually if you can do that.
That's perfectly fine if the mayor can take a look at the schedule and see if you can.
You know, I understand if you have frustration, I mean, I'm with you, I would, I hear you out, and I have no time to talk about it right here. But I just don't think we can do it that way. Am I on the right track?
Mr. Watkins, what are your thoughts on?
Yeah, I agree it'd be difficult to go into closed session under these circumstances.
Which is perfectly fine if someone would be willing to sit down with us and talk. I believe we could hash this stuff out, it's just, it's been ongoing and it hasn't really gotten any better since the beginning.
Okay, we will have to discuss this, I guess. Any suggestions?
I would just, the problem is for councils, again, and I assume you want to talk about different aspects of the, of the development plan and the submission that you, that's before the town at this juncture, right?
That's at the heart of it. Well, that's the basis of what I want to talk about.
Yeah.
At the heart of it is really just the responses that I'm getting back from the town when we have a question.
If it's, if it's generic like that, the problem is, and Rodney, so you guys know too, there's a process obviously that we go through when, when you submit something to the town for review, goes through the planning commission, and then it often lands up to the council. Or individual council members, or even the mayor, for that matter, to get involved in that before it comes, before the body as a whole, opens up criticism in a lot of different directions on you guys, that you're trying to pull some strings and get around something. On whoever's meeting with you, that, that there's some, that somehow we're trying to add a way for you, or if you, lack of a better word. And communication between one council member that the other council members aren't privy to is something, is something that would concern us too. And we would be making statements in that were prior to a public hearing, which is scheduled, which would have to be scheduled, which is required. So it's not that we, and I'm speaking for myself.
I understand.
It's not that I'm not more than willing to, to meet with you, but to get into the actual submission itself is something at the council level I, I think is, is kind of a precarious situation for us. And I don't know, Jason, if you have any comments on that or not.
But may I interject just one second? I, I'm not asking to talk about the development procedures, but I would like to talk about responses or lack thereof when we ask a question to town staff.
Yes, sir.
And if I don't come to you guys.
Right.
Who do I go to?
Right, and that's why, I hear you, and that's the first, not the first time I've heard this before, so, I mean, I'm more than willing to listen. You sent us an email, I just said we can't go specifically into closed session, but I, and I respect your coming here and telling us this. You know, so that's, that's, I'm all ears to hear you out, but I just don't think we can do it.
And just so you understand, Freedom Information Act, which is, which governs our public meetings, there are certain criteria that we have to meet before we can go into a closed session or hold a closed session without being open to the public and open to the news media and what have you. So if we violate that, then we, we're, we're in trouble with the Freedom Information.
Okay, well, Baker Development obviously doesn't want you to do anything to violate it.
No, I know that.
And that is not our intent.
I know you don't. I, I, that's why I'm trying to explain what some of our barriers are in communicating. But, you know, as Lincoln said, I mean, this is a, this is the public comment, you're welcome to say whatever you'd like here, and, but for us to meet, or if you want to meet with the mayor, that's up to the mayor if he wants to be with you.
Again, I'd find it interesting to see if that's appropriate to do.
It's, that type of meeting would not be illegal, it would carry the risk with it that Mr. Sharrow has talked about earlier.
How about if he sent an email to the council email? But as I said, I mean, of course it's foible, but.
Yes, that, that would work fine.
Just one left.
Okay, yeah, I can do that, I can send, I can send an email, I have no issue with that.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Rodney.
All right, so ahead, signed up for public comment, anybody else want to speak?
So Rodney.
Rodney, I'm sorry, do you want to say something? Luray downtown initiatives.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good to see you guys. We are working on July 4th, it's starting to come together well. Our portion for Luray downtown is going to be from noon until 4:00. We're hoping to have some food and some things going on, some music going on with the folks at the Arts Council and that type of thing. So I'm hoping that we're going to have a big day, and I know that we're going to have the cornhole tournament on the bridge that evening and some of the other events that are going on. So Jen and her department have done a great job this year as well of adding new things to the event, so I think we're going to have a big success again. Evening on Main started on June the 3rd, and we had a great crowd for that, so we were really excited. Our T-shirts are supposed to be ready by the end of the week, so, because we're going to be selling Evening on Main's concert T-shirts with Evening on Main on the front, and then the concert series on the back, just as a little extra way to make a few bucks. And then the only other thing I have is that, as you know, the survey went out for the remote work pilot program. As of now, Steve, I think, what did you say, we had 63 responses?
Sixty-two.
Sixty-two responses so far, so that's good. I received several phone calls and things of that nature. Mr. Sowers and Ms. Lillard, you will see in your email that the 28th date for June has been now changed to July the 20th, from 1 until 2:15, because of some scheduling conflicts, and I thought it was important that you guys be there, so. And that's, that's all I've got.
That works better for me anyways.
Right.
Another, it's going to have to be out of town.
Oh, good, 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 so.
What date did you say?
Uh, July the 20th. If you remember, from 1 until 2:15.
Okay.
Yeah.
Counsel, any questions from the other?
I noticed in the survey results, it's been a number of mentions about some of the property, particularly the artisans and the former Browns. Can you provide any updates?
I can, all of this, or all of last week, they were inside working on the artisans. They have been in there working, so that's encouraging, and there are supplies in there because I'm nosy and I peek through their window. And I do know that the folks at IVR are planning on starting on Browns, it should be anytime. I think it's just been a thing with crews and with the farms and maybe be some short staffing or something like that, but they've been telling me that they're going to get started as soon as they can. And then as far as the property of the old Chapman house, again, they're in there working on that, they've been running into some supply problems, getting like appliances, things of that nature, and I think that's a nationwide thing for folks right now. So, but we are making progress. Sure.
All right, public hearing on the town budget, Mr. Burke?
Yes, sir. Council's requested to conduct a public hearing to receive citizen input on the town's budget. The budget has been amended by the, the tax adjustments that council has adopted so that the proposed budget for FY 22, 23 is thirteen million, eight hundred sixteen thousand, three hundred eighty-three thousand dollars comprised of seven million, four hundred thirty-seven thousand, nine hundred fifteen dollars for general funds, two million, five hundred fifteen thousand, two hundred eighty-four dollars for the American Rescue Plan Act funding, four hundred thousand for the community development block grant for Luray Meadows Apartments, one million, six hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred twenty-eight dollars for the water fund, and one million, eight hundred forty-five thousand, three hundred fifty-six dollars for the sewer fund. The, the advertisement for your public hearing was, was made in the paper, and town staff have not received any comments either by mail or email.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing on the town's fiscal year 2022, 2023 budget. Anyone to sign up to speak, Steve?
No, sir.
Anyone here like to speak on the budget? Hearing nothing, I will close the public hearing. Counsel? We're not asked for action.
No, sir, you, you can't actually state code, yeah.
All right, number 28, is that right?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Burke, donation parcel 42A3-a-47A.
Yes, sir, your second public hearing for this evening is to fulfill a request from Living Legacy for the town to donate a 0.37 acre parcel known as, known by tax map number 42A3-a-47A that's located off of Fixler's Ferry Road to them so that they can further develop their park site.
All right, I'll open the public hearing on that then. Anybody sign up to speak?
No, sir.
You got any comments?
No, sir.
Emails, nothing? Is anyone here like to speak? Audrey, it's. Are you okay? No, you don't have to, I mean, we're, it's, yeah, it's fine.
You can come and plug your, your real phone, or as you want.
Yeah, I need to, I need to see all y'all after this. Thank you, Mayor, thank the town for all of the work that y'all have done with us over the last five years. Here lately, I've been doing something I never did before, which is looking at bank statements and invoices as we go through these new stages of, you know, developing a park that could be over a million dollars, and a museum that, you know, is forty thousand dollars. Just this week, put in Central Air, which was twenty thousand dollars. I was just reminded before going into this meeting, when we started this, we just went on faith, we knew it was going to work out, and everyone that's here and the town joined us, and, you know, we never had a lack, everything worked out, and so I'm confident in that, and even with this land being donated, when you look at the history of this land and what we're doing, it's so much bigger than the recreation center, it's so much bigger than the Andrew Jackson School Memorial Park. It's forging, long-lasting, generational comfort and security and trust and building, and it's a beautiful thing, because I know as Mr. Sharrow says, you know, when you're dealing with taxpayer money, you don't want to give it to nonprofits, to things that don't necessarily speak to all of the taxpayers that putting money in. But when it comes to something like this, some land that was just sitting there, I think maybe in the 40s, some things were switched around, roads came in, and some intimate domain situations, and now you just have some trees that have grown up and some tires and some other things that have to be getting to, to, to be removed. But in that, there's this potential for this open area for a park and for some pathways for people to ride bikes, and it's not costing anything, but it's meaning the world to generations to come, so I'm so excited about this. Thank you.
Audrey, thank you, and thank you for all you do for our community.
Thank you all for working with us.
Congratulations on your award.
Yeah, thank you.
Richly deserved. All right, anybody else? Who else wants to speak? I'll close the public hearing. Now, counsel.
I move the town council approved the donation of a 0.37 acre parcel identified at tax map number 42A3-a-47A to the Living Legacy has presented. A further move to authorize the town manager, town treasurer, and town attorney to execute and record all documents necessary to fulfill this property transfer.
Counsel, any discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrow?
Yes.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I see you got Walter for what, hang and draw, oh, what was that?
Whatever you can do, whatever you can do.
Thank you, bud. All right. Mr. Sedwick, will you come forward? So we understand you're leaving us.
Yes.
Thank you for all your years of service, I certainly appreciate it. So whereas, on August 19th, 1991, did you remember that?
Yes.
David M. Sedwick began his service to citizens of Luray, and whereas, Mr. Sedwick began his service to Luray as an operator at the wastewater treatment plant, and whereas, Mr. Sedwick transferred to the water treatment plant as an operator on August 28th, 2018, and whereas, Mr. Sedwick has repeatedly demonstrated his ability to resolve issues at both the water and wastewater treatment plants, and whereas, Mr. Sedwick has distinguished himself as a hardworking and dedicated public servant, who at all times was committed to promoting the health of residents through his service at the treatment plants, and whereas, Mr. Sedwick has cultivated strong relationships with his coworkers and his presence at the town will be missed, and whereas, Mr. Sedwick has served as the town's safety coordinator, promoting a safe work environment for all town employees, and whereas, Mr. Sedwick has announced his retirement from the town effective June 3rd, 2022. Now therefore, be resolved that the mayor and members of town council of the town of Luray hereby express our sincere appreciation and gratitude for Mr. Sedwick's dedication and commitment to the town of Luray. Congratulate him on the occasion of his retirement, and wish him the best and continued success in his retirement and future development. David, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Ron? All right, counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mayor, I'll move the town council through the proclamation and reclamation for Dave Sedwick as presented, and wish him a long and wonderful retirement.
I'm sure there's no discussion, there is a discussion, I was saying. Thank you for your service, we appreciate it, we're very diligent, interesting people, I've learned a lot. Daniel?
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
All right. Board of zoning appeals, recommendations, Mr. Burke?
Actually, we've got one more item before that. Mr. Sedwick, upon his retirement, has requested council's consideration of allowing him to purchase his, his town-issued cellphone.
I would deny that, I say we give it to him. So, I think we did say to him to come and, I want to help him with the work, but we appreciate his service, and at least we can do, so I'd make a motion that we give Mr. David Sedwick his cellphone, appreciation for his 30-plus years of service to the town of Luray.
Second, discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Lillard?
Yes.
Mr. Sharrow?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
All right, now, Mr. Burke, the Board of Zoning Appeals, recommendations.
Yes, sir, we have one member on the Board of Zoning Appeals who has requested consideration of reappointment, reapportment to the BZA. Council has requested to make a recommendation to the Page County Circuit Court Judge to consider that reapportment of Mr. Andy Cavendish for a five-year term that ends June 30, 2027.
We're still down one person?
Yes, sir, we are looking so, if there is anyone that's watching that, that is interested in serving on the BZA, if they would let the town know, we could present that to you at a future meeting. if they would let the town know, we could present that to you at a future meeting.
Counsel, any discussion of that? What's your pleasure?
Say, David, what are you doing these days? I know you're kind of busy at home.
Yeah, very busy.
I'll move that the town council recommend Andy Cavanis to just, uh, just of the Page County Circuit Court for reappointment to the town of La Ray Board of Zoning Appeals for the five-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-seven.
Discussion? Daniel?
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Willard?
Yes.
Mr. Shire?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right, Mr. Burke, Mechanic Street Lot Electric Improvements. No, excuse me, I missed another one, well, how could I miss that one? Section fifty-eight, twenty-one, and I'll let you handle it.
Yes, sir. Council's requested to consider a code amendment to establish Town Code Section fifty-eight, twenty-one, public urination, defecation, in order for the town to be able to cite individuals and prosecute them for issues in public.
Is that considered public?
Any thoughts on that, counsel? I mean, the whole thing, I'm back here. I think we should restrict it here. You want a motion? Yeah. I'll move town council adopt code amendment to Town Code Section fifty-eight, twenty-one, public urination, defecation, as presented, to be effective upon adoption. Second? Okay, any discussion? Daniel?
Ms. Willard?
Yes.
Mr. Shire?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Burke, now Mechanic Street Lot Electric Improvements.
Yes, sir, council's requested to consider approval of a request from our Park and Rec Department to update the electric system at the Mechanic Street parking lot, as well as Ruffner Plaza. During our May twenty-fourth work session, we had presented a cost estimate for work strictly at Mechanic Street that cost about fifteen thousand dollars. However, upon further discussion with the electric provider, they would require, at minimum, an annual service fee of four hundred dollars for turning on and off the power, and that would apply anytime the town had to turn off the power. So, looking at that, Ms. Jenkins has updated her request. What we're looking to do now is to continue with the new panel with a single hundred amp service from the two-hundred amp panel, as well as purchase two five-thousand watt portable generators to allow us to have remote locations for vendors, as well as to do some minor repairs to the Ruffner Plaza electric board. Total costs for these improvements is about eleven thousand, five hundred dollars, and staff would request council's consideration of use of ARPA funding for these improvements.
I assume those generators that are inverters, required ones?
Correct. Thankful, well, at the last event that we had at Mechanic Street, apparently, the electric panel did fail. Thankfully, Mr. Leroy Lancaster was available and loaned the town one of these five-thousand watt generators that we used. Unfortunately, Mr. Lancaster doesn't sell them, but we have located a different vendor for those similar generators so that we will hopefully be able to provide the same footprint that we wanted with the expanded electric service there, plus the portable. We asked.
Counsel, any thoughts on that?
I think, I mean, we use the lot for a lot of different things, I think it's, I think it'd be a good use of. I'll move that the town approved funding of eleven thousand, five hundred towards electric service through Mechanic Street Parking Lot and Ruffner Plaza, and acquisition of two generators, the funding can be from town's ARPA allocation.
Second? Daniel?
Mr. Shire?
Yes.
Mr. Pettit?
Yes.
Mr. Sowers?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Vickers?
Yes.
Ms. Willard?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Burke, the twenty-two community survey.
Yes, sir, staff are pleased to report that we had two-hundred-and-eight people participate in the twenty-twenty-two community survey. The town's provided services received favorable responses, with road maintenance and public safety receiving the most favorable responses, and code enforcement the least favorable. With regard to the environment of the town, we also received generally favorable responses with ease of driving, parking in neighborhoods, and the greenway receiving the most favorable responses. Ease of biking and growth management received the least favorable responses. Resident responses indicated the majority felt very safe in La Ray. The respondents also identified a desire for additional shopping, entertainment, and job opportunities, as well as an increase in the availability of housing. Of the two-hundred-and-eight respondents, ninety-two percent were residents, forty percent worked in the town, and fourteen percent owned a business in the town. If there's any questions about the responses, we will be making these public tomorrow so that all of our residents can review it.
I'm curious, how do, do we verify if people actually live in the town? I've learned over the past year especially, that many, many people think they live in the town of La Ray.
No, sir, we don't, and based on some of the responses with regard to road conditions and the availability of internet, I'm assuming that some of the respondents truly do live outside the town limits, but believe that they do live in the town.
That was my suspicion to your reading.
Any other thoughts on survey, counsel?
No, I think it's a good idea that we're doing this, it's good to get candid.
And there were some very candid responses.
So.
Yeah, I noticed a lot of the crap of buildings, decayed buildings, after a year. Often thought we needed a light code. I would like to look into that seriously, a lot of.
Yes, sir.
The process, we do it, adjacent to do it, right, I mean, we've had some companies that have been doing that, some companies from Haymarket and, I think, some different places, I just really think this is, uh, their code enforcement was mentioned, and I think she and I have talked about the case. That could be made easier if we had a show of light.
All right, Audrey?
I've had two calls already this week, that people, their neighbors having dumped their trash in their yard. It's just a difficult thing to do, I don't think we have the tools right now to do it. But with the council's blessing, I would like to perhaps move ahead with that. I've done exactly the process.
We'll develop, we'll identify a couple of ordinances that have been adopted in other localities and present them to you at a future meeting so that you have some idea of what the town can pursue, and then what some of the implications for adoption of those ordinances can be. Because, and the chief can attest to this, the, as far as, even with high grass, we have to, we, the town, have to follow state code, there has to be a process, we have to notify the property owner that it has an issue, we have to give them an amount of time to address it. If they don't do that, then we have to work through the court system, and, well, the court, basically, I know the chief has just gone through one or two properties, and basically, the court did the same thing, they heard what the individual property owner came into the court, told them, no, I haven't done anything yet, and the court gave them thirty or sixty days more to address it. However, the court does have a much broader scope as to what they can do. I think there's a fifty-dollar per day fine that they can pursue after the date that they identify for a cleaning up of the property. So, there are implications, so we'll try and present all of that to you.
I have a question, maybe, Jackie, with the, on the Augustine Building, do we have any idea what their progress is? It looks like it's kind of taking a step back and it's stopped. I mean, I know we take control, but the timeline is, it's kind of rough right now.
They were in there, like I said, all of last week working, I saw them there every day, in there working. And the last timeline that was given was they were shooting for September, to be, to have it ready.
So I guess they'll move working outside at some point.
All right, I think they're trying to get the inside.
I got you.
And I think they ran into some snags with the renovation, but they're trying to get the inside done so that they can get it up and running, and then they'll start working.
I don't think they're working or just, you know.
But the workmen have been in there, working.
Anybody else on the survey? All right, Lake Arrowhead, self-service parking.
Yes, sir, council had requested staff to investigate options as far as addressing some of the excessive use of the Lake Arrowhead Park. One item that was identified by the mayor was the potential use of a self-service parking payment system at the lake. Staff have identified a couple of different options. The one that staff would recommend would be one of the electronic payment systems that allows individuals to pay by credit card, pay by cash. Due to the limited cellphone coverage, we don't believe that you would have, you might be able to use an app, but we're not positive that that would have enough coverage at the lake for that. But this would allow individuals, staff would recommend that we issue either a sticker or a tag to town residents to keep on their vehicle so that they wouldn't need to obtain the parking permit. But individuals from, that are visiting from out of town would be able to pay a nominal fee to park at the lake. This device has the ability to then allow our police department to know which vehicles buy their license plate tag number that they enter when they pay for the fee. The police department would know which vehicles have paid, they can drive through the parking lot, identify those that have not paid. The machine also dispenses a little payment receipt that we would ask people to put on their dash, and if they didn't have that, then the town could pursue either notifying them to pay the parking fee or to issue a fine if counsel adopted that. This device is about four thousand dollars, the communication for our police department is another five hundred dollars. We estimate that it would be an additional thousand to fifteen hundred dollars for us to build the base, as well as a cover for it. And just wanted to discuss that with counsel, to see if that's something that staff should pursue and get more information as to what it would take to implement. We did find out from this supplier, and I believe it will be similar with others, it will take two to three, one to two months at least for them to deliver that, and then it'd be probably another month for us to install it. So, most likely, we would not be able to implement this solution during the summer. But the benefit of this solution, it would be a year-round option for the town. And then, if we do get it in the fall, that would allow us to work out any of the bugs before we get into the serious visitation in the spring.
Tell me how it works, how will the police officer distinguish the?
Well, when you go to pay, there's a keypad, and you have to type in your license plate number. And then, I don't know if that's with this or not, I apologize. With the, there is an app that the police department would then have that lists all of the license plates that have paid for the day. And then, they would have to just go through and identify a vehicle, if it's not, doesn't have a sticker or a hanger, just look through the list of those vehicles that have paid, and determine whether or not it's, that they have paid, and then proceed with whatever enforcement we need to do.
So what are they, what are they charged with, um? What's the charge for?
Well, that would, yeah, it would be, we would have signage that basically says, if you're not a town resident, you have to pay for parking. And then, as part of this process, council would have to establish what the parking fee would be, five or ten dollars, and then what the fine would be. And then, once this has been implemented, we would go through a period of just letting everyone know that there is now a parking fee to go to visit Lake Arrowhead.
Would they require an ordinance?
For the?
To be able to charge a fine for that?
Yes, sir.
I presume?
Yes, sir.
We have one now, a prayer, a week for. It seems like a pretty reasonable solution, I've been talking about, just talk about it a little more. But, you know, we're getting, on weekends, I haven't been down in a while, but there's a lot of people coming down there on weekends, I mean, in, you know. I sit up in favor of county residents being free, but, okay, town, maybe some kind of pocket or something, they can pick up here, town office, or send them the border bills, or something like that, like simple up there. And as long as the police felt like they could reasonably, maybe not get everybody, or try to, but if people just do, there's, every now and then you might be some enforcement, that probably be enough, nothing out of, if folks enjoy the park so much, they're probably shocked it's free anyway. So, I think it really could be a good solution. See, I can see a couple of things that'll come up, like, what do we do if someone wants to go use the beach? Are they going to pay the parking fee, and then also beach fee, do we tweak that? And even more so would be shelter rentals, if we have something where, if you get a shelter, you get, you know, five or ten passes, something like that, I don't know if that.
Be like a day pass, like that pass would just be for that day of the, is that what I'm saying?
Sure, sure.
We issued a annual pass to town residents, that was a shelter.
I'm talking about for shelter rentals, yeah.
Yeah, for shelter rentals, it would just be a day pass.
Oh, yeah, no, I mean, so would you, would people rent a shelter for fifty, forty dollars, fifty dollars, whatever it is, and then also have to pay parking to get there, or would we?
I think the day passes would be included with the, is that what I'm saying, basically, we've got, we're expecting.
That's, yeah, that's what I'm asking, so, yeah, how would we do that?
There's probably fifteen cars, you know, heading here for a rental, so they get, but those passes are just good for that day.
Sure, oh, yeah, yeah.
Whatever we do is only going to be as effective as enforcement, and, if there's a question, you know, something you think we can, we can enforce, because if you're not going to enforce it.
No, we can enforce it, obviously, we've got to set up a town, try to, you know, probably get it every day, but go up, it's hard, try to even try to do it every day. During the winter, other than the summers would be the toughest. If I get all the proceeds, we'll really, we'll, but no, we'd already talked about it, as far as, especially with the extra officer, having to go off on Saturdays, it'd make it a lot easier to get up there. Property check.
How often do you guys normally check in town, just a drive, you know, just driving through?
I think it's seventy-two times this month.
Okay. Just more than a couple times a day.
Oh, yeah, I'm trying to get them up on every two hours, maybe. Have your own weekends every hour, but, people take it all down.
It's worth a drive.
It's more informational, yeah.
Is this going to be located, like, you know, it'd be like an area to pull over or something?
No, in discussion with Jennifer, we think the most beneficial would be just past where the playground currently is, there is a kiosk there that we could build a little drive-through or some other means so that you could go there and pick up your, and pay for parking there. Same, the intent is to make sure that it's far enough in that it wouldn't, people wouldn't be backing up as you're entering. It's close enough that you know to go to it, but it's far enough away that it doesn't impede people coming into, everyone else that's coming into the park.
I was wondering how people would even know that they're supposed to.
And again.
Get this, you do an order, so there's the challenge too.
Yes, sir.
Someone parks, they didn't get the pass, but they never, they didn't even see it or know they had to, so.
And, and that's where we would have to work on, uh, work with Bo to determine the appropriate signage so that people know that there is, you know, for non-residents, there is a, a parking fee.
And doing a parking, but I've signed, uh, national park fee area. We call the Aron Rangers throughout the car. It'd be a self. Which is my, my initial thought, but, uh, this is something much higher tech and much easier to do.
But the, the Iron Rangers are about twelve hundred dollars compared to, to this, so.
And what does Jim, does she have any input on it, other than placement of that, she's?
Oh, no, she's, she's all in favor of anything that would be, uh, advantageous to, to hopefully, uh, it'll, it would allow us to better track the, the number of, of out-of-town visitors as well as generate some revenue.
I think, I think the goal is to cut the crowds, if we can do that, then start charging and I think if word gets around, we are charging. We have to hit, have it with enforcement first, during the winter.
Is there any way that we can get a cellphone booster or anything like that up there?
I, I don't know, um, you know, short of having another cell tower built somewhere in the area, I don't know that we have the ability, short of working with an AT&T or T-Mobile to, to boost individual cell reception there. Uh, that has been part of the conversation with, with this group is, um, what type of communication system we would need to extend to it so that, uh, police department would have access.
It'd be great if we could get something up there, and it's not, I mean, you're in nature, so it's not like you, um, some people.
But do we have internet?
Same time. Do what?
I was asking if we had internet up there.
We do, on a good day.
Sort of, yeah.
It, it's not, not consistent, unfortunately.
Well, AT&T does make a booster that works off of, uh, satellite.
And, w- w- we have, we, we, we do have internet service in, in, at the lake, um, and typically it works, you know, we have a bad storm, it's disrupted, uh, but, uh, so getting the communication to that unit, um, wouldn't be a problem. Guaranteeing that any individual using their cellphone provider would be able to use a mobile app to pay for it, um, I don't know that we would have the coverage for that, that's, that's why we're looking at a unit that takes credit cards and cash so that, um, we're not relying on anybody to be dependent upon their cellphone.
Well, I, I hate the idea of charging for parking to begin with, I mean, does this mean that Route D Park is going to be charged for parking next?
Well, I, I could, I, I think we'd maybe shift from parking to a user fee, which is pretty much the same thing, which is paying users, so, parking such a whole, it's not a way of parking.
It just happens, the product is called Parking Box, but again, I think that this conversation, uh, was born out of hearing concerns from Jennifer in regards to capacity and population, and she is a park management.
I know, it just still bothers me.
Okay. We can serve some.
I know.
Well, we don't, I'm concerned too, that how do we continue to operate these facilities that are growing and demand more attention as far as both maintenance and trash removal and, and staff and all that to take care of it without producing some type of revenue of some sort to help offset the taxpayers' expense? When we're seeing at the lake, the majority of the users are not the rate taxpayer, um, it's, it's those from out of town, so, I, I, I hear what you're saying, I'm just saying that somehow there's going to have to be, uh, try to have some means to get some cost recovery, it's never going to pay for it, it's just to try to help offset. Yeah, because what, what happens is. Growing expenses of maintaining that. We don't, I mean, what continually gets dispatched to the taxpayer, to the rate taxpayer.
Five thousand people are paying for it.
Five thousand people are paying for it.
Fifty thousand people use the thing or something, yeah.
People from all over the area are using, and so there has to be, and, and also to the detriment of the town resident, because it's so crowded that often they can't enjoy it, so, and it's, we, I agree, we have to do something. A guest is a beautiful park, and we're all state taxpayers too, we can't go there for free, yeah, we have to pay mentors, we, national parks. We don't pay federal taxes for it, we can't go on that ground, we're not going there for free.
Well, we'll, we'll continue to research, uh, any other options that we might have, and we'll, uh, continue to try and work through the issues and, and location for installation and, and report back to y'all.
Sounds good.
Thanks.
As always, the devil's in the details, but I think. All right, anybody else? All right, Mr. Spock, do you have anything for us?
Don't have any, done, like, mayor, thank you.
Counsel? Um, I don't really have anything, when is it coming up, Steve? I don't have anything coming up.
Uh, the, the town will, uh, be observing the Juneteenth holiday on the twentieth, Monday, so our offices will be closed. I apologize that, that's the only, only item that I'm aware of.
When are we doing the, uh, employee picnic?
The first.
Yep.
Friday, the first.
Friday, the first.
Yeah.
Somebody reached out to Leroy?
Daniel and I have talked about that a little bit, I'm not going to be there, but I will, I will talk.
He's got the outfit.
He's volunteered, girl.
All right, anybody else? All right, thank y'all. We need to go.